Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
9:32 on Thursday, December 17th, and it's a special board meeting for the budget. So we need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. All right, so the capital budget recommendations and discuss. Who would like to start?
I think it's probably me, right?
Well, if you'd like to, sure, go ahead.
Okay. You all have a, can you see this schedule?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
I have mine.
So what we're looking at is the capital budget analysis cash flow review. That's the first schedule.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna go through it by column. First, the voted column 2020-21. This is what we voted and approved a year ago. This was then added to the next column, which made the funds available for 2020-21 the following. For highway road and structures, 73,437. For the highway equipment, 318,431. For guardrails, 20,000. For town hall requirements, 11,239. For the computer upgrade program, 11,404. For the maintenance of the bridges, 27,000. And for our bridge construction program, which is the Walker Bridge, 74,759. And that does not count the $100,000 that was approved a couple of years ago. Now, what's, what do we going to spend in 2020-21? Well, we've spent $54,000 on the highway road and structures program, and that's for the Hinckley Brook culvert replacement. That's what was spent. That leaves a balance for 630, 2021 estimated at 19,437. Highway equipment. We have spent $23,198 on the lease payment for the excavator, and we're going to spend $154,372 on the truck number four replacement. That's gonna leave a balance as of 630, 2021 of 141,059. Guardrails program. We're not intending to spend anything per Danny. The fire truck fund, we spent the $15,000, so there's nothing there. Town hall requirements. We still have the 11,239 as nothing has been spent as of this time. Computer upgrade program, still have 11,400. Bridge maintenance program, we have 27,000. And the bridge construction program, the same 74,759.
Hey, Hardy, go back to highway equipment.
Yes.
I don't know. I might've got lost in there. It didn't sound like any of the figures that you set are the figures that I have.
Excuse me?
The highway equipment. Just go back through that line again.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
It was 177,372 that was spent?
Yes, or will be spent by the end of this year.
Okay, so then a projected fund balance is 141,059?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's what you're gonna do.
And did you get the two items there? The excavator lease payment and truck number four replacement?
Oh yeah, right. Yep.
Okay, then what we're looking at for spending for the coming year is number one in the highway equipment, 23,198 again, which is the lease. And then probably another 15,000 for the fire truck if we approve that today. Now let's close to the proposed line. Basically, I want to start at the top and skip over the highway equipment until the end. Highway equipment, road and structures. I put in, and the team has put in, $3,563. If you go to the second sheet, which would be highway structures and culverts, which looks something like this. You can see that there are three projects on the sheet of paper. The first one is already completed, which was done a year ago. Chester Road, number one. 2019 and '20 was the year that it was completed for $79,111. Project number two, which was completed this past year, is the Hinckley Brook project we talked about, where it cost us $54,000, but we got a $110,000 grant from the state, which made the total project 164,000. We're looking now at probably not doing another culvert until around 2026 or '27. To do that, we probably won't do that unless we get a Vtrans grant, which would be 90% of the cost. Now, the next project on our list was Fisher Hill, number 10, for $198,000. If we got the 90% grant, that's 175,000, and it would cost us 23,000. We already have, as you can see there, $19,437 in our fund as of today. If we were to add 3,563, we'd have 23,000, which would be what we would need in 2027, '28, or in that time period. So we're recommending no more than that at this time. Any questions on the culverts? Okay, the next thing I want to jump to is the fire truck fund. We're putting in again $15,000. We've had no communication regarding this fund or what we should be looking for as far as a new fire truck, et cetera. So we're recommending just go with the same amount that we've been doing, which will yield them about a reserve balance of probably close to $150,000 towards a new truck. Any questions or discussion on that? But that was our recommendation.
Hardy, if my memory serves me, last year when we went over the budget, they were supposed to give us some kind of a schedule or something. Did we ever get that?
No.
I remember that.
We haven't gotten anything. There has been zero, I haven't heard a word this year, so. And I don't think anybody else on our committee has. And so the committee, you know, voted to go with the same thing that we've done, which means they will have a reserve of about $150,000 towards whatever they want to get in the future. Or when it comes time.
Hardy, did you try to contact anybody on the fire department on this?
No. I did mention it a few months ago to Mr. Matt.
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne.
Hi Suzanne.
You know that Chappy's been very, very ill. He's been in chemotherapy for about three months. And that could have been the reason why no one heard from him, but Stan could probably speak to that better than I.
We, I passed the message along. Both the chief and Chappy has been aware of it. I don't follow either one of them on a daily basis, so I don't know quite where they are with it. But they were aware that they needed to present a program. I can certainly, there's gonna be a change in the officers in the fire department. I can certainly contact the new group and see where they stand with that.
Any other comments on that?
I just say it, it would seem like if they wanted more money, they would have been proactive and said, "We need to bump that 15,000 up." So it seems like your committee made a kind of a logical assumption that you hadn't heard anything, so 15's still a good number.
Yes. That was our reasoning, basically.
I agree with your thinking there. Yeah. People want money, they speak.
Okay, the next column is town hall requirements. We have 11,239 there. Stan sent me an email where he has a couple of potential projects. One of them, do you want to comment on them, Stan? Or you want me to just mention them?
I don't have those figures right in front of me, but one was to finish the replacement of the windows.
Right, that was for about $14,000 in your letter. And then the other one was the electrical system upgrade between 10 and 12,000, but that was a rough number. So we have this 11,239 right now. Kim also has, in one of her reserves, another 11,000. So we have about $22,000 available for the town hall updates, which probably is enough for the coming year, I would think.
Yeah. Hardy, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Maybe it's more directed to Stan or John, but at one point, there was discussion about the foam insulation in the basement and scheduling with the closing of the building in order for that to happen. But I never heard that it actually did take place. Did that work get done, or does that still need to be done?
75% of it is done. They ran out of product. The only thing they have to finish up is underneath Bill's office. Everything else is completed.
Okay. Okay. And? And so, so have we been billed for the work already done?
No.
Okay, so that work has to come out of this number as well?
I'm not, I actually don't, it was about 6,000 if I remember right. Again, I don't have that paperwork in front of me. And I'm not exactly sure. I know it was, it was projected to be spent, but I actually don't remember where it was coming out of.
And there was a little extra added to that bill because they had to do it on a weekend.
Yeah, that's included in that 6,000, yeah. But they're coming back. The schedule to be finished now is January 9th.
Do we have any more bills to come in related to this project? Or are we paying?
I don't know if Kim has gotten, I haven't heard of anything has been billed out yet.
I haven't gotten any other bills.
So they'll probably just bill the whole thing out when it's finished. We have a proposal on that, so it should be that amount of a proposal.
Okay, any other questions, comments there?
So just for clarity, it isn't really 11,239. It's 11,239 minus 6,000.
Plus another 11,000 that Kim has, which is probably where that 6,000 was gonna come out of.
Okay.
Computer upgrade program. We presently have 11,404. We don't have anything in sight right now. There's a possible program that we might do related to. Kim, you want to comment on it? Because I'm not exactly sure what that project was.
Well, one of the projects we were thinking about is about a year and a half ago almost now, we talked about bringing up a firewall, so bringing all the wiring from down in the basement and putting it up into the Lister's office into a large box. Dominia had given us a quote back then, and it was approximately $8,000. So we haven't moved forward on that, and I'm waiting to get another estimate from them. But that might be another project to really be considering.
The point is, I think if we do that, we have the money available. So that's where we are. Okay, any other questions on that? Bridge maintenance program. We have 27,000. We thought we would just run it up to 30, make it an even number. So we added 3,000 there to make $30,000. Danny does not plan on utilizing this money in the next year as far as we know, and that's what he expressed to us. The bridge construction program, 6,311.
The bridge maintenance program. John and I talked to Danny about the budget a couple of last week, I think it was. And what Danny is saying, that even at $27,000, even if you brought it up to 30, you can't do very much. The cost of rehabilitating the bridge with the painting and everything else. So I'm just wondering, maybe that $3,000 should go somewhere else other than the bridge maintenance program instead of town hall or some other item? Because you're gonna put the money in there, but it's not gonna get used.
It's your discretion to use it as how you see fit as a select board, so just do whatever you want. And in fact, that 30,000 could be switched anywhere if you want to.
Okay, so none of these funds are absolutely dedicated to the category?
That's correct. That's what we discovered last year, and that's why we call it projects. There's, you know, projects that are presented to you for you to spend the money as you deem the most appropriate for it.
Can I have a, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
The money that's in these projects, if it's not used, where does it go? Does it stay in that project, or it can be moved anywhere you want it?
It can be moved anywhere the select board wants it moved. If you were to tell Kim or me to move it, we would move it.
Is that to any capital budget project?
Yes.
So as long as it stays in the capital budget, you can put it in any of those categories.
Well, I don't think then you have to move it. You can leave it right there, and if you do have to, then that's the time to do it.
Then you do it, and that's your decision.
Right, so leave it where it is.
Agreed.
Anything else?
The bridge construction program.
Okay, we'll move on to the bridge construction program. The estimate, and there is a schedule which I gave you that's in your packet. Basically, the total amount of the Walker Bridge replacement was estimated at $4,148,460,000. Our 10% cost share is 414,846,000. We presently have collected through taxes in 2018, 100,000. 2019, '20, another 36,500 to get to 136,500. And in this past capital budget, another 46,391, which would get us to 182,891 towards that goal of 414,846. If we continue doing this at $46,391 a year, we would have that money by 2025, '26. So that's our logic there that we came up with last year, and we're keeping it the same right now.
Has there been any word about what they feel is other construction timeline for that? I thought it was originally '23 they were gonna build it. That might be out now.
I don't know.
They don't have any idea.
Danny has. Anything?
When I have asked Mark Pickering, they have no idea.
Okay, any questions there? Now I'd like to move on to the highway equipment depreciation schedule, which has across the top, all of our equipment. So I'm gonna start right at the left-hand column. And you can see that different categories are expected life and years for the various equipment, the cost of the equipment, replacement costs, new, estimated, a trade-in. And then we go into the depreciation per year, and ultimately come up with what it looks like we'd have to replace the equipment. So the first one is truck number one. Purchase date was 2018, and it's a seven-year life when it was purchased. And that cost was $193,340. We're estimating that it costs new would be about $200,000, and a trade-in would be about $40,000. That would be with the seven-year life. The future budget cost looks like it could be $160,000 roughly. And if you look down, you would see that we would have to replace that truck approximately 2025. That's where the box is. The next one is truck number two. Purchase date 2016, another seven-year life. 159,298, one new. We're expecting the replacement cost to be around 175, and we should get 30,000 with a seven-year life, the trade-in, with future budget cost 145,000. And we would need to replace that in 2023. Then we get to the pickup. If we have a five-year life there, that could be as much as seven years, but we have it in at five. That's gonna cost us 25,000, and we would be replacing that in 2025. Truck number four, the purchase date is this year, or 2021, basically. And 154,174 is what it's gonna cost us. A new one will cost us $180,000. And a trade-in would be $40,000 or 140,000. And that's basically still over a seven-year life. It's possible that, and that would come due if we did it in five years in 2027, or if we pushed it out a couple more years, it'd be 2029. We can discuss that in a few, a little bit later here. The loader is a 12-year life, cost us $174,500. Replacement cost new is 185. And Danny got an estimated trade-in on that of 85,000, so it's gonna cost us $100,000. And that would come due in 2025. The next item's tobacco, purchased in 2012. The plan is not to replace tobacco. So we do not have that in as a replacement because of the excavator purchase. The greater purchase was date was 2010, the 15-year life. 173,900 is what it cost us then. They're estimating that a new one's gonna cost us 300,000. And the trade-in that Danny has got from whoever he would be purchasing this from is 100,000 bucks. So it's costing us 200,000. That also comes due in 2025. We then get the tractor and the excavator, whose lives are 20 years, and go out well into the future. So are there any questions on this schedule before we move to the next one?
You got a lot of purchases in '25.
Yeah.
That's correct, and that's where we come to the next, the next schedule. So the next schedule is the analysis of the equipment cash needs in the future here. So in 2021-22, and that's a schedule that looks like this. It has analysis of equipment cash needs at the top. In 2021-22, we know we're gonna spend 23,000 for the excavator. In 2022-23, by the schedule, we have another excavator payment plus the replacement of truck number two for 145,000. So that's $168,000. In 2023-24, we have the excavator lease, the final year of it, 23,198, and the replacement of truck number three for 20,500, which is 48,198. And then in 2024-25, we have replacement truck number one for 160,000, the loader for 100, and the greater for 200, a total of 460. So that's total cash over four years in the future here of 699,594. Less the equipment fund balance as of 630, '21 of 141,059. We need to plan for roughly, if we buy all of these things, 558,535. So if you spent that over four years, it would be 139,634 a year. Or if you spent it over five years, it would be 111,707. There are other options as well, which, you know, we discussed as a capital budget committee. Chester is an example. Regularly purchases or borrows money to buy their equipment. As an example, in last year's notice of town expenses before they had their town meeting, article number six was to see if they would spend, per borrow, $140,000 for a new dump truck and to be spent over four years. So you have options of how you want to purchase your equipment. We're not necessarily saying we should do that, but that is an option. Or you could push the greater out a year, and that would reduce the cash needs to 116,347. But again, who knows how much you'd lose on the trade-in value? $100,000 right now for that is pretty significant. So what we looked at was if we spent the whole amount of money, that's gonna make our total requirements going up from this year's 175 to 207,588, which actually would be approximately, you know, a three or four cent increase in our tax rate. We didn't think that was necessarily realistic. So the committee settled on basically a midpoint. They said, "Let's go with 190,000 bottom line," which would be a highway equipment number of 122,046, which would represent, this represents roughly a one cent increase in the taxes. Actually, the full amount would be a two cent increase. And people decided they thought it was wise to go with the one cent increase because nobody knows what the taxes are gonna be in the coming year relative to the education, et cetera, et cetera, and the impacts of COVID-19. So that's what the capital budget committee represented and presented.
Hardy, what figures make up 122,046?
That's just a number. Instead of 139,000, which it would take to get it in four years, that's just, that's just a number to get to the 190.
Okay. So you reduce some of them?
We reduce some for this one year. You could always, if we didn't fund something else in the next year, increase that. So, or you could even go up even more, you know? It's, it's just if we need to spend 558,000 in four years without borrowing any money, we gotta get there somehow. And the 122 is a start towards that number. And that was what was voted on by the capital budget committee. That's not my number or anything. It's just, it's a fallout number based on the feelings of the whole committee.
But what items did you reduce?
I didn't reduce anything in particular.
But you had to reduce something to get down to 122?
No, because we're spending the bulk of the money in the 2024-25 year. That's when we need $460,000 going out the door. We have enough money with the 122 to pay for whatever we need in the next couple of years.
Wasn't there a discussion at one time on the truck one and two to reduce those to five years rather than seven?
That's correct, and I have done that on the schedule. But you aren't gonna probably do that until they come due, okay? In other words, you can't do it all at once.
Right.
So we have reduced. If you look at truck number four, that's a four-year life or five-year life, and that would be in $140,000 in 2027. Danny did get a little bit of information on that. I gotta see if I can find it. That it's quite possible that if, that we could get a $55,000 trade-in on our truck if we were to go to a five-year life. But we're gonna have to figure that out over the next few years, whether this really works or not. But basically, you gotta improve or reduce, you know, what you spend on maintenance costs and depreciation by about $40,000 a year. So if we were to get a trade-in increase up to 55,000, it definitely would make sense, okay? But that's gonna be something. But that's going to be something, a decision you will be making as we move forward here. You're not gonna, that's not something that really comes into bear this year, other than starting to plan for it.
Yep.
Can I ask a question, Hardy?
Of course.
More directed to John. Um, I listened to the capital budget discussion and how the group came up with this number and recommendation. And, and when the vote was taken, there was one dissenting vote on picking that number, and it was John. And so obviously he either wanted more money or less money. And, and I didn't get to hear what his thought was. John, can you comment on that?
Well, I think I explained it when I was doing it that I wanted the full amount and not have it reduced.
Okay, I, I, I kind of got that impression, but I, I didn't remember hearing you say that.
Well, I think I, I even said more that every year, uh, the highway gets, uh, cut. Cause that's the only place you can cut. You can't cut the school and the school goes up and nothing is done because you can't do it. So the highway gets it, and this is what happens now. It's, it's getting cut, it's getting cut again, and it's not right. This, this is equipment that people have to rely on to go to work and make a living. You know, and go grocery, go grocery shopping and all that. So that's, that was my reasoning.
Yep, I, I, I agree with that.
And anybody that's run that equipment, uh, in the snow and the ice and, uh, uh, salt and fluoride and all that. Knows what it takes for a beating.
Yep. So, so you, i- if you had gotten what you thought was appropriate. It, it would have been, uh, how much more, John?
I don't know what Hardy's figure was, two hundred and something?
No, it would have been, well, it would have been a hundred and thirty-nine thousand a year instead of the one, um, one twenty-two.
One twenty-two.
Yeah.
And Hardy, that's a two cent increase on taxes roughly?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne, may I ask a question, please? Um, Hardy, you had mentioned in the other budget discussion, the previous budget discussion, that these funds are fungible, uh, among the various line items by the select board decision.
Yes.
Um, is the same thing true about this one hundred twenty-two thousand or the one thirty-nine, depending on which way the decision goes? Or are those funds restricted to the use of saving them for future purchase of the trucks?
No. It, it's just.
No to which, no that it's not fungible or no that it's, it is restricted?
It's not restricted. We, we had an opinion, I think all of us, last year from our, um, accountant. That none of these funds, and that's why we changed the name from reserve to fund, were, uh, restricted. They, they are there for the select board to spend as is needed. But we're preparing for the future, that's the purpose of the funds.
Thank you.
So I think the simple answer is the select board has the, uh, ability to, to go to the higher number if they want to, um.
And, and Hardy, I, I, just for the minute sake, so at, um, at one twenty-two, you're at one cent and at one thirty-nine, you're at how many cents?
About two cents.
Two cents, thank you.
So it seems to me that, that, um, that by listening to the questions and, and Hardy's presentation. Is that everybody seems to be okay, but there might be, uh, some, uh, reluctance or some wish to increase the, uh, highway equipment amount. I'm just summarizing, so.
I think everybody's in agreement that it should, that we should provide more money than we have in the past. Last year, we only provided seventy-five thousand. So this year, we're recommending a hundred and twenty-two, um, and it could be as high as obviously the, the one thirty-nine.
But, but what creates that is because you have three pieces of, uh, equipment due all at once.
That's true. And, and it's out four years.
Right.
So you, you can, you can do the one twenty-two this year and then next year, say, hey, we got to get to the other and make it even more. Okay, so, uh, I mean, you could go to the two cents next year. You can make it, because it's not due for four years, all of this stuff. You have a little, uh, leeway here to figure out your game plan of how you want to proceed.
Well, the, the grader could be pushed one year maybe, you, you never know.
The, the key there, I think, would be, uh, you know, what we would get as a, uh, you know, as a trade-in for it. I mean, we don't want to, you know. Do it a year later and lose twenty-five thousand dollars of the trade-in or something.
Danny's concern on the grader is so much electronics that, um, you know, it's kind of unknown when all those electronics would start to act up. And, and would greatly influence its, its, uh, resale value or trade-in value.
Well, if we use it as the fire, the, the fire department, for an example, the ladder truck, uh, the, the chassis on that truck is twenty, is twenty years old now. We did that, but the ladder itself is, is close to forty. Um, and we've had multiple, we've had fairly high expenses on all the electronics on it. So the, you know, the grader probably, uh, could potentially follow the same thing. The mechanics of it is fine, uh, and it's exactly what it is. It's the electrical, uh, the electronic aspect of it.
All, all the, all the surrounding towns that have equipment like this do not keep the, the equipment out for like fifteen years for grader.
Right.
But this grader here, the grader that you have now, you don't use it for plowing. Um, now you just use it for grading, so it only gets three hundred hours a year approximately use.
Correct. But, and then also, also example, doesn't Chester have two graders? So I mean, they have a backup. If something happened, they're not completely without a grader and we, we rely on only one.
Right, but you could rent one someplace if you, if you had to have it.
But Chester has many more back roads than we do.
That wasn't my point.
No, I know, but I mean, that's why they need two graders. I don't think they have a grader there because of the backup. They, they probably need it to keep up with, with the roads, I would imagine.
They use it for grading in the spring because it's so many roads.
Right.
Sean, can I ask you a question? Not, yeah, my question is, what's the mileage in roads that we have compared to, um, our equipment in terms of, are we overloaded on equipment or are we about right? Sorry.
That, that, that's a good question. I guess you have the equipment that fits the people that you have. You have three employees and you have three trucks. Uh, if you only had two employees, would you have just two trucks? Um, I don't think two trucks could. So I would say, yes, you're, you're probably pretty well fit with the equipment you need.
Can I, can I speak to that, Kathy?
Sure.
When we were planning for the town garage, we, we corresponded and, and spent quite a bit of town time with West Weathersfield. Which is a town size-wise, mileage-wise, everything very similar to ours. And, uh, equipment-wise, we are, um, uh, appropriate. But they actually have one more truck because they have a four-person crew now rather than a three-person crew. So I would say for what we have, we're about right.
I, I guess I was thinking in terms of, you know, I'm looking at almost a half a million or more dollars in the next four to five years. We have to, you know, raise, it's a lot of money and there's a taxpayer, and not for myself, but the taxpayers out there, they're going to look at this. Are we too top-heavy? That's, that was my question. Thank you for answering it.
Well, I, I guess the question is we need some kind of a motion, I think. I mean, how do we want to proceed? We need, we have the tactically regular budget. Um, so, do we want to make some kind of a motion or do you have any more questions, Hardy, before we move on?
Uh, my, my only question is, I guess, is a procedural one for Bill. I believe, uh, you say we have a public hearing coming up on this same subject, which I don't quite understand, but, um, isn't it after the public hearing that the select board would vote on what they want to do here? I don't, I don't really know, it's a procedural thing.
Yes, the, it isn't clear to me because it isn't a public hearing in the sense of state law. Therefore, it doesn't have to be publicized in the same way. But our policy says that you will have a public hearing on it. For that reason, I, I didn't want to do it today because I wanted it to be at a meeting that was far enough out that people would, would realize. So, yes, there's a public hearing on it on, uh, Monday, uh, along with a public hearing on the town plan. And your vote on that should take place at that meeting. Um, but you could give an in- indication today on what your feeling is so that Hardy can either present more or be ready to discuss more at that meeting. I don't think you need to spend a lot of time on it at that meeting. It's giving people a chance to look at the budget and, um, and comment on it, that's all. Whether they do or not, that's up to them.
A- a- and if they comment, I'm guessing that that really is, still leaves the decision up to the select board as to what they want to do. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But, but if the board here today agrees in principle that we either want to keep the twenty-two or the one thirty-nine or something in between. Then when we do have this public hearing, um, then the select board can say, yes, we, we agree that we would like to do one of the other. That's all.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'd make a motion that anticipating, uh, future expenses going up for whatever reason, either shortening the lifespan of a truck or however that may fall in. If we're going to anticipate additional spending, I, I'd make a motion that we, uh, start moving ahead with that thought process and, and budget a hundred and thirty-nine thousand rather than one twenty-one.
Is there kind of a second to that?
Yeah, I, I, I know I was for that, but, um, I've been thinking some more about it with it being four years down the road. We still have, um, time to do something about it like next year. So that probably we could still stick with the one twenty-two.
I, I kind of, I kind of agree with John and, um, I was thinking the same way that maybe to just bite the bullet. But when you kind of look at what the, with the year we have with the COVID. And the school could be a real disaster this year, the taxes could really skyrocket. And, um, and like John, and I agree with, what John is saying is that we have a few more years to catch up. Maybe we should go with a little more conservative number and go with the one twenty-two and then we rethink this whole thing next year.
And you, you also have other categories that you can take money out of, like the bridge maintenance program. So, because you, you, that, that, you're never going to reach a figure in the bridge maintenance program of enough money to do anything. I don't care what you do, you're never going to make it because stuff is so expensive when you work on a bridge. But that, that's one of them. So that's, I guess I've changed my mind a little bit, but, uh, either way, I would go either way right now, but.
I think if the concern with COVID and school, if those things happen. And next year, you have to come to them and say, well, we put it off last year because we were worried about it happening. Then we're going to be saying now that it happened, now we have to raise it because we were, we couldn't commit to it last year. I think we should do it now. So I second Stan's motion.
Cause you're just like, uh, like Alan just said, I, I, I think you're just, if you don't do it, you're just going to kick the can down the road and you're going to have to suffer for it more in the next three or four years.
It's going to be really hard to tell them next year that we have to do it now that we know those things have gone up. Right now, we're just concerned that they might go up.
Well, I, 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 I kind of, I, I, I agree with you, Alan, as well. Um, if, if you don't do it now, you, yes, you can play catch-up, but then it's going to be expensive, more expensive perhaps.
It'll be hard to tell them after you know it's gone up to say, oh, well, now we need to do it.
Uh, there's always something that comes up.
You bet. Oh, you bet. There's never a good time to pay taxes.
Nope.
This is also presented to the town as an article, I believe.
Yes, it's a separate article.
Yeah. Yeah, so town has the ability to, whether it's an Australian ballot or on the floor, on the floor, they have the ability to amend it or just, or do whatever they want to do with it, yes.
Well, this year, they're not probably going to be able to amend it because it probably will be an Australian ballot vote, which will be just a yes-no.
Yeah, and, and if they, if they voted it down, then, um, then they, then would, you know, the town would be, they would have to pay more taxes in future years.
So if it gets voted down, that means, um, that we have to go back and rework a budget and then bring it back to the voters a second time? Is that how that would work?
Only if you called a special meeting.
It would be for the capital only.
Otherwise, if it got voted down and we did nothing, then we would have no budget, is that correct?
Yeah.
No capital budget.
No capital.
Budget, you have a budget, but no capital.
Well, well, that's what I meant, yeah.
But you still have to consideration, what do you think the people are going to think with a yes-no vote?
It's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to second guess what they're going to say, but it's certainly a lot easier to, 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 to check, make a check for the no column than to stand up and fight for it on the floor, that's for sure.
Right.
I think we're supposed to make our best recommendation based on the information we have. Um, if the voters overrule us, they overrule us, but we're doing it. We have the advantage of all these numbers that Hardy and Danny have given us. Um, we may have to do some explaining in our informational meeting, but.
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, last year, Hardy, correct me if I'm wrong, our education taxes went up about ten percent. And I think the prediction is another nine to ten percent. Is that on top of the ten percent we were already raised last year? And do you have any insight into what our education tax is going to be since you're working on that too?
At this point, the nine percent they're talking about would be the non-residential tax rate. Because of the shortfall in all of the, uh, things that go into that, sales tax, et cetera. So that nine percent is the non-res tax. The ho- the homestead tax comes from the school budget that gets approved, divided by the equalized headcount. And then spread by the headcount in the towns. So nobody knows what, whether that's going to be nine percent, ten percent, twenty percent, five percent, no percent. It all depends on what the school budget is that's approved, divided by the equalized headcount. Does that answer your question, Suzanne?
It does, except when will we know what that school budget is? I, it just seems to me a variable in the discussion about what the voters are going to do.
And, uh, there was a budget meeting the other night, which, you know, I saw the budget and obviously there's, the budget went up that they're presenting so far, but it's, you know, three months down the road before they even complete that budget, I would say, based on what I can see.
Was that budget that they, um, came up with, is that around seventeen thousand per child?
Uh, it didn't, they didn't even get into that. All they did was show what the total spending level would be and they had an. spending level would be, and they had an increase of about 4%. And they also agree, mentioned at that meeting, the principals mentioned, that all they did was basically take where they are today and add economics. So, nobody has any inkling there, okay, right now, in my opinion.
Suzanne?
I certainly don't.
Yes?
Um, the, the town budget gets, gets approved in, in March, but really, we, nobody knows what the school budget is gonna be until, until June.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah.
There's no way to equate, say, well, the school budget's gonna go up 10% or 5%. The, you, you have to vote for the town budget, as you see, and whatever happens, happens. And that's, unfortunately, that's what happens.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll just throw, one, one of the other-
I'm just trying to empathize with the voter, such as I, and think about the big picture of our taxes, and how people are gonna react to the town budget in that context.
But there's also, what you have to remember, Suzanne, too, and, is that even though, I know, I know each, each one of us wants to keep the budget as low as possible, but we can't control inflation, we can't control what a cost of a truck is, we can't control maintenance. There's a lot of things we just can't control, and if you, and if you keep try, trying to level fund something, eventually, it, it, it all backfires, because you, you can't control only what you can do. You control how much salt you put on, you can control your salaries of your employees, you can control things like that, but you can't control what the cost of a, of a, of a truck is, or what the cost of pavement is gonna be, or anything else.
At that, that meeting, they said there was a 63% increase in special education. And Jack Breyer says, no, that's not right, and he laid the, uh, problem on the financial computer system. So, I, I don't know.
That's because, that's because I think, they didn't put in any, you know, money that they get back from the state to offset the special education. The other thing-
That's right.
They had on the, on the spreadsheet for assessments, they had Grafton listed as Westminster, and Westminster listed in Grafton, and they showed us with a million-dollar increase in our assessment. They had only 200,000 for, for Westminster. So, I mean, it-
We do have a motion on the floor. So I, I think we, the discussion should really be towards the motion, and then make, let's decide how you want, maybe take the vote, if, once everybody is satisfied.
I just think it's kind of interesting, if you go back to John's comments, that we can always spend the money for schools because of whatever reason. But we can cut the highway, which the buses travel, people travel. It's like, why, why is, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not, I'm in favor of education, but why is it such a sacred cow over the safety of people traveling on our road systems? I don't get it.
It's so hard to level fund equipment, that, that prices go up all the time, fuel, maintenance of it, and everything. And so, I, I've fought with this for the last 30 years on the capital budget, and every time, I've been voted down on it. Uh, it's, it's not right, because that equipment is what makes the roads safe for people to travel on.
Well, you got a chance to vote different, John.
Do we want to call the question, or do we have further discussion?
Call the question.
Okay, so, maybe since it's, this might be controversial, how about if we do it by, by individual? Alan, how do you vote? Yay or nay?
Yay.
Kathy?
Uh, yes.
Stan?
Yay.
John?
What are we voting on?
132.
139?
Yeah.
You, you voted nay, Stan?
I thought it was 122.
No, no.
No, we moved to 122 to 139.
Do the 139.
139. You want to restart?
If we want to back up and have Bill reread the motion.
Yeah. Bill, you want to reread it, please?
Yep, just a second. That we budget the 139 figure. Now, I think it's 139 something, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. I can, just hang on.
Yeah, we should have the exact amount.
139, 634.
139, 634, instead of 122-
046.
Yep.
122 what?
046.
046.
Okay, so now that we have the motion, Alan, let's start again, so we want, we're voting for, yay or nay?
Yay.
Kathy?
Nay.
Stan?
Wait a minute, I didn't catch, you know, please say yes or no. Yay and nay sounds the same to me.
Okay.
Start over.
Alan is yes, Kathy is no, so far. Stan?
Yes.
Wait a minute, Kathy is?
No.
Stan is yes. John?
Yes.
John is yes, and I'm yes. So we have four yeses, one no.
What are you scratching your head for, Alan?
Itchy.
All right, so are we done with the capital budget with Hardy now? Or do we have any other issues that we need to talk about?
You need to, you need to then approve the total amount, please. And Hardy's gonna probably have to give you that number.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to-
It's not gonna be 190 anymore.
I think it's gonna be 207, 588. But still, how does this relate to our public hearing? That's my question, I guess. Are we jumping the gun here a little bit?
No, because I think what's-
I'm gonna put into the, I'm gonna put in my schedule, which I will go over at the public hearing, you know, the higher number.
Yes.
Okay.
The 207, or whatever, at that point, and then you people will have the opportunity to vote on that, I believe, right? Or approve it, or-
Then, yeah.
Right?
The motion, the motion should be that the numbers used for the public hearing will be the, uh, the budget you presented, but using 139, 634 instead of 122, 046.
Right.
Yeah.
And then if they, if they, if they disapprove that, then the Select Board could also change their mind again, I guess, because this is not official.
And it's, and then it'll also come out in the wash when there's an article put before the voters.
That is correct.
That's correct, yeah.
All right, so anything else on the capital budget?
Well, you need to make that motion.
Oh, okay. Somebody make that motion?
Make that motion.
Second it.
Any discussion? So, all in favor of the motion that we have to, that, you want to read the motion, Alan?
Okay, that Hardy will present at the meeting the capital budget in the total sum of 2,007, $207,588.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's five to, five to zero. So, what else? Hardy, do you need anything else from us?
I don't think so.
Would you need anything else from Hardy?
Yeah, I just want to say, Hardy, when will you have that, those figures in the schedule that I can, that I can look at?
Uh, I can give them to you tomorrow. I just gotta go on the computer and pull up the program and change the number, basically. That's all I gotta do.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right. So the next item on the agenda is the work, is the, is the approval or changing or agreeing of the budget of 2021, 2022. Kim, do you have anything you want to start with this? You had another issue that you wanted to discuss, too, I think.
Yeah, actually, why don't we do that first? I've been in touch with Fred from Sullivan Powers and Jenna. We should have our audit back, probably today. I got it last Thursday, but I've been going back and forth, because some things weren't allocated in particular categories that I wanted, when it came to the reserve. So we're working on that. The management letter looks really good. As soon as I get that back today, I'm hoping it's today, she promised it, I'll have Bill forward the board copy of the draft, along with the management letter. And, and that's for the purpose of just the Select Board, and once we get the hard copy, then it'd be available for the public. But what we need to do, according to Fred, right now, we had money that we didn't use on the paving. We, in 2018, we created what was a reserve, an article for a reserve that people voted on for retreatment. But we didn't move money into it. Our intent was to have it, and then move money into it. So when we had money left over from what Danny and them did not spend in the paving, that's considered unassigned money. So there was no restrictions to it, and there was no assignment of the money. And the same happened for 2019, even though it's still sitting there. So in 2019, we had $95,993 left in the paving, that our intent was it to go into the reserve. And then in 2020, when we finished our year last year, we had $95,230 to move, for a total of 191, 223. So we were gonna take, and which we did this year, we took all of those two funds, along with our new 105, and we spent it on our retreatment paving this year. So that's fine, everything worked out good. But what they, what Fred needs you to do is to make a motion as a board, to actually move that money into the restricted account for the year 2018 and the 2019. So we do have a total of 191, 223 on the, on the page of my balance sheet in the reserve. So, that's where we're at right now. So he wanted to know if you could make that motion, and then they can follow through with the rest of the audit report, showing that that's the money that's in the reserve.
You said restricted account, but did you mean reserved account?
It's, it means the same. Restricted is reserved, because restricted was voted on upon the voters. Assigned, from, if I'm getting this right from Fred, assigned is the, the Select Board assigns the money. Restricted, the voters say what happens with the money. They're pretty much the same, other than the assigned, the Select Board can do as they like with the money. Restricted is only up to the voters. But either way, he'd like it either assigned or restricted. Um, my preference would be more on, to lean towards the restricted, to move it to the reserve, because that was, I believe, the intent. So we're, what we're looking for is a motion that would move the 2018 money of $95,993, and the 2019 unassigned money of $95,230, to be moved to the restricted fund balance called the Highway Retreatment Fund.
I'll make the motion as recommended by the town clerk, and Judge Fred.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If, if there isn't, say, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Bill, five to zero, to, to approve the motion. You got that?
Yep.
All right, so Kim, is there anything on here that you need to deal with us on the, the revised budget sheets that you sent us a couple days ago?
No, I haven't changed anything, other than I brought down the health officer. The first time I'd sent it out was 1,200, I brought that back down to 100. And I had to change the humanitarian-
1,000.
1,000, from 1,200.
Right.
Because the first sheet I sent out, I had it at 1,200. And then the second sheet that I just sent out, I'm down to 1,000. And the humanitarians, I needed to bump up the humanitarians. We did have one request so far, for a humanitarian article of the 1,000 for the church. And then we had to include-
On that, 11,778, that 1,000?
11,000, I believe it's 11,878.
Plus 1,000. There are two different, there are two humanitarian articles. The church is voted on separately.
And anticipated-
It'll be voted on separate, but then it's going to be listed as a humanitarian in the actual budget sheet.
Okay, so it is in there, 1,000.
Um, hold on, what page is humanitarian on?
Three.
Three?
Pretty near the bottom, under other voted articles.
Okay, so the anticipated is the 12,878. Last year, we had 100, $100 for the rural fire. Remember, we voted that from a special article. So I had to add that $100 in there, and then the 1,000. So we're up to the 12,878.
And are we not revisiting the health officer for any increase?
We can, Kathy, that's the, that's why we're here today.
I was going to, when Kim was finished.
I, I'm all set. Those were the only two changes. I do wanna, just to point out, so it looks as though the overall increase for expenses right now on our budget is $657 increase from last year's expense budget. This is just for the general fund, so it's the highway and the town government. And that would give an overall increase on the revenue portion, when I created the revenue of what I anticipate coming in, some up, some down. The taxpayer property tax that I am anticipating collecting would be up by $4,994 from last year, anticipating coming up. And that's it.
But that didn't include capital, buddy?
That does not include capital, and it does not include, um, yeah, it's just the capital, I'm sorry.
Capital.
Yeah. The capital and our local agreement. Our local agreement is also figured separately, depending on, you know, the, the ones that get voted for, like Historical Society, all of them.
Redocument.
Yeah.
And that's every year, right? We do that?
That's every year. I'm done.
Okay. All right, so Stan or Kathy, do you want to address the health officer issue?
Well, I know we discussed it last time, and I believe, Bill, you spoke to Rich about the paperwork issue, and I would still recommend that he have the $200 raise, or increase.
I would agree with that all.
Yeah, I would also.
Me, too.
Alan?
Are we gonna vote, or are we voting?
Well, if we all agree, then we vote. We don't have to vote. If we don't agree, then we vote.
Okay, go ahead.
So everybody's in agreement to increase that by 200 bucks?
Yep. My issue I raised was contingent of documentation, and it looked to me like the documentation had been furnished.
Are there any other numbers that we want to address, either up, down?
I have one. Could we go back to the overtime? We put in 17,000 the last couple years. How much was spent in the previous budget?
Overtime on what, highway, John, or?
The town, town overtime, town highway overtime.
What page?
On 11/12, I sent you guys a budget status report. And to show where we're at right now, we had budgeted 17,000, and we had not spent it yet.
But, but we, we still got, what, five months to go, six months to go?
Five months to go, yeah.
Yeah, so it was 17, and we've spent like 8,000 or something?
We haven't spent anything yet, as of November.
No, no time. Yeah, so could, could you tell me the pre- Yeah, so could you tell me the previous year, I think you put in seventeen too, how much was spent of that seventeen?
Okay, let me go back to my computer, and I can bring that up.
I can, I had it, and then I can't find it now.
Well, she's looking that up. Is there any other, any other budget items that we'd like to revisit or comment on or whatever?
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne. I have a question, if you don't mind, please.
Go ahead.
And I may have missed this, I just didn't hear it in the earlier discussion. With respect to article, what was last year's article ten on the humanitarian expenses, are those going to remain intact in an article for the town meeting?
As far as I know, they are. The only, the only addition is the Grafton Church, or the community church, whatever you want to call it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did we add that?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did.
It's a separate article.
Okay. That's a separate one.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know why that is that way, but you know why?
Why is it separate?
Yeah.
Because we've never been voted on before.
First time.
They've never been part of the humanitarian.
I understand now.
Fun.
So if it gets approved, if it gets approved this year, then next year it would automatically be included unless it gets pulled out by the voters.
Or unless they don't want it.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I understand.
Hi, Joe, it's Wendy. Can I ask a question?
Sure, Wendy.
The humanitarian article, is, I'm not sure what the acronym, is it SEVeds? Is that how you say it? That's, yeah. Why is that considered a humanitarian, quote-unquote, expense? What's humanitarian about it?
I don't really have to ask Kim.
I think they give in training for people for jobs, is that part of it?
And have they demonstrated to you all that they do that for Grafton specifically?
Well, that's passed a couple of times, and I don't know if that's ever been actually resolved of how much direct to Grafton that's been.
Wendy?
Yeah.
I do remember we've asked that question, and they didn't, I didn't feel they specifically said Grafton, but they did say things like being involved in the vocational schools, Bellas Falls Vocational, and things that our students participated in. So there were events they did that Grafton people benefited, but, but not maybe just for Grafton.
Yeah.
They also, they also did something, they also said, talked about the Wyndham Foundation too, working with them, I do believe.
I think that might have been because of the jobs provided by it or something.
I would just hate to see the humanitarian article voted down in this town meeting specifically with the Australian ballots because of that particular expense. That's all I'm gonna say about that, is, this is the chance for the voters to actually, many of whom don't go to town meetings, to actually participate in the vote, so that's why I bring it up.
Are you, Wendy, are you suggesting that that should be a separate article rather than lumped together?
I would suggest that, but I don't know if you, if it's, you know, if that's something you guys are interested in, but I would suggest that, yeah.
Mr. Chair, this is Suzanne. I support Wendy on this. My sense is, and I listened very carefully to their report yet last year, and I don't think they were as specific, to Al's point, they were very clear about the ancillary ways they serve Grafton, but they weren't clear about the specific ways they serve Grafton. And I know that the way they have worked with, quote-unquote, the Wyndham Foundation is in recruiting for our cheesemaker jobs, and that really haven't been, you know, that effective. So I would, I would suggest, I think the amount we give that organization is disproportionate to our other humanitarian expenses, and I would suggest, as Wendy does, to put it in a separate article.
Can we do that, Kim?
Yep, you can do, yeah, you guys are the board, and you create whatever article it is that you guys want. They are requesting the same two thousand and thirty-seven, I believe, and I'll just break it out and give it its own line item in the budget, too.
I'll make the motion as requested.
Yeah, second it.
Any further discussion? So all in favor of Alan's motion to give it its own separate article? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all righty, so it has a separate article. It's probably a good point, because you're right, you wouldn't want to vote down, because this is completely different year this year now, you don't have the opportunity to amend either yay or nay.
Yeah, and Brad Voight's been dead for a long time, and he used to be the one who would always vote this article down anyway.
Let me also say, and I think Kim could, Kim had got this information, that many of the towns are taking all the humanitarian's out this year because of budget.
That's, I don't, I don't see that.
Well, and especially this year, I mean, if you're, you're voting up your capital budget and stuff like that, and take out humanitarian, that wouldn't make sense to me at all.
Not at all.
I agree.
Do we have any other items that we want to, or Kim?
Okay, I have those figures. So for two thousand and eighteen, sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars was spent. Two thousand and nineteen, sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six was spent. Twenty twenty, we were down to eight thousand, four ninety-nine. And then this year, we've only used a hundred and fifteen so far.
Do you know the reasoning why that was down that one year?
All I can say, maybe it was the snow, and the overtime wasn't as intense.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, so do we have any other items that we need to revisit, change, talk about, whatever, on the budget, on the proposed budget? Well, Kim, are you looking for a motion to accept this budget now? Is that how you want to handle this?
Um, I don't believe it so much right now. It's when it comes time for the articles, and you will accept the articles at the time.
Okay.
Okay, so what I do is I take these numbers, that will create the article for the selectmen's budget that you will then vote on.
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to have a formal vote here?
No, I don't believe so.
So we will have an opportunity to do that at some point down the road?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As I wrote to you yesterday, and for other people to know, on January fourth, you will have, you will tentatively approve all the articles for the town meeting. Because the deadline is the fourteenth, you will have a meeting on the fourteenth at four fifteen, the deadline is four o'clock on the fourteenth of January, to approve the articles then, just in case any, any new articles come up between the meeting on the fourth and the fourteenth.
Well, so you really want to approve the articles on the fourth. You're gonna wait till the fourteenth. You can view them, and we should have them compiled, but it's, it's the fourteenth that you really want to vote on them.
Okay.
Could, could we approve on the fourteen, on the fourth, with the idea that if any additional come in, then we would have that special meeting on the fourteenth to review and approve or deny additional?
That was my question, too. I didn't talk to Alan, but I talked to Bill about it, is that if there was no changes, why would, why would we have to have a special meeting?
Well, because the statute gives a particular deadline, the statute gives that, so.
We could still put the meeting, and if nothing happens, we could cancel the meeting. No?
I don't know, I've never been asked that, that would be a legal question. I just go by the statute, we've always waited to the deadline in case.
I'm just curious, if everything was approved, like, you know, but, you know, so be it.
No, it's up to you guys. I'll have everything ready, I think.
We'll see what motion you guys make on the fourth.
Okay, why don't we wait till the fourth and then?
Right. Okay, the other thing is, I would like to pass the articles by the town attorney, just to make sure, especially those several that I pointed out to you, make sure that they're properly worded. If that's okay with everybody, I'll do that.
Fine with me.
Fine.
I think this year, you gotta be, you gotta be super cautious on your i's and your t's, because it is a, it is gonna be Australian ballot, and you don't want to have anything that can be construed later on. So I guess if there's, if there's nothing else on the budget, do we have any other business? If not, public comment? Suzanne, you still there?
Hello.
I'm here.
Have any public comment, or Wendy?
No, thank you. Except to say, thank you for this process. I think it went very well today, and I appreciate the work you're doing.
Yeah.
I have one thing.
Yep.
For some of you, you know, I sent, I, I asked Microsoft people, I mean, asked our Dominion Tech, and the new meetings in the future will be by link to the agenda. I'm not gonna send invitations out, because I don't need to do that. In this way, it'll be more in keeping, wait one second, you guys can't hear me, wait a second.
I can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, Bill.
I can hear you, Bill.
I can't hear myself because of that radio. Anyway, so all the, every, I'll send the agenda to everybody, and maybe even to my, and to my residence list. Anybody wanting to come to the meeting will just click on the link, and it is an easier way to get on, too, it's more clear how to get on.
And you post that.
Just in the future.
You post that agenda to the website, too, right, Bill?
It'll be on the website, it'll be everywhere, so that link will be available to anybody, yeah.
So if you went to the website, it would be active off the website just as well, which is Wendy's point, correct?
Correct.
All right, well, if there's no other business, thank you, everybody. We need a motion to adjourn, and.
Simone.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and remember, we have our meeting on Monday. I think the agenda is pretty much set, although I haven't, I'll talk to Bill, but I think you've already got some advanced copies, so if you have any, any questions on the agenda, talk to Bill.
The only thing, the only thing added to it would be the light posts.
No, did you put the cemetery on there, too, Bill?
Oh, yes, I think I already added that.
I didn't see it on the, I didn't see it on it, but make sure it's on there.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, well, stay home, guys, enjoy the snow.